Check, check. One, two, three. One, two, three. Sorry, Jeremy. I'm seeing your message now, if you can hear me.
I can't start without him. It's my demand for that service. I can testify.
That's a good thing. Yeah. So, so I'm saying the same. You know, I got out really hard to do the right thing.
Sick.
Okay, let's get started. For those of you watching on TV, sorry for the late delay. We did have a walking tour of the T-zone area that just ended. So appreciate your patience and indulgence. But I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask, could you please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
I'm here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Leon?
Here.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Charter?
Here.
And do we have a motion for Mr. Duncan's remote participation?
May I move that City Council approve electronic participation by Mr. Duncan for this meeting for medical reasons pursuant to the City Council's policy for remote participation in City Council meetings as adopted by Resolution 2023-06.
Second.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
So how about a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. No proclamations tonight. How about oaths of office, Madam Clerk?
Uh, we don't have any this evening. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to receipt of public comments. Would you like to do that, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Um, the summary of written comments this evening. Uh, we had several folks send their comments on the East End Small Area Plan after it was adopted on June 26th. And they were Amee Lynn Gunther, Jason Hobby of 210 Southwest Street, and Kristy Nguyen. Um, on the Quinn Home Stretch Development, Lynn Roche of 1015 Parker Street expressed concern about height, density, parking traffic, and the need for retail space, um, and questioned the need for retail space on the proposed Quinn Project Plan. In other letters, Stephanie Lomore asked that the needs of veterans with sensitivities to fireworks be considered when planning future July 4 celebrations. Um, Dave Rifkin of 126 Whittier Circle requested sidewalk repair in front of his house. Chris Machelli Senior of 138 Rolling Trace reported hazards from concrete spills at West Broad and Anandale, expressed concern about security, the security of the city's website, and commented on Mr. Rifkin's request for sidewalk repair. The Falls Church Climate Action Network Steering Committee members urged City Council to include the proposed geothermal energy in the community center renovation and urged them to adopt the Falls Church Government Operations Energy Action Plan 2023. And that was it.
All right, well, that sounds like a pretty good amount of stuff. Let's go on now to, um, the receipt of public comments. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak right now? Seeing none, the matter, uh, at least this portion of the meeting is closed. We'll go on now to the report of the City Manager, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Charter, members of council. Just three things to report on. Uh, first, I want to just note for the community and for the City Council that we've published our 2023 Community Profile. And this is an annual, uh, production that we, uh, put out for the community that, one, provides, uh, important facts and figures about the City of Falls Church, uh, demographics for the City of Falls Church, but it also notes some of the recent accomplishments and, uh, and work that the city's been done, uh, that the city has, has done in the areas of, of the City Council's work plan and the, um, and the, uh, and the city's comprehensive plans. So it notes, um, uh, progress that we're making in the areas of economic development and the areas of econo-, um, of, uh, environmental sustainability and preserving small-town character and, um, and, and the other areas of, of the city's, uh, City Council's work plan. So I just want to note that that is out and, um, and commend it to everyone to take a look at it. Uh, the, the other two things to report on, uh, the, um, on the City Council's work plan is an update to the city's demographic studies, study, um, that will also, that will help the school board with its enrollment forecasts, but also will help our housing staff and our housing commission identify housing needs in the city, among other, uh, needs that a demographic study can, uh, can help us with. We're planning to proceed with the Stephen Fuller Institute with George Mason University to assist us with that, um, update to the city's demographics. The last thing I will note is, uh, uh, we have entered into a contract with the firm of Grove Slade to update the city's bike master plan. And, uh, we look forward to engaging with the community on that update this coming fall. Uh, one practical thing that I want the council to be aware of as well, um, with respect to Meridian High School and Mustang Alley. Um, as part of the approval of the West Falls Project, we, um, had a lot of interaction with Fairfax County. And at that time of the approval, the site plan approval, Fairfax County, uh, wanted two lanes through to Shreve Road. Since that time, we've obtained the grant to have the bike, uh, lane installed, the multimodal trail installed on Shreve Road that will allow people to safely bike and walk from the WNOD trail to the intersection of, of, um, Haycock, Shreve, and Route 7. We have always wanted to be able to tie that bike facility all the way to Mustang Alley. And with the approval, uh, by the Planning Commission of the Converge Site Plan, uh, the county is on board with that approach. So now we're working with all the parties, including, uh, Rushmark, which would be developing Converge, Hoffman, which is right now in the process of, of building West Falls. Uh, we'll be working with VDOT and with Fairfax County to possibly make a site plan change for the configuration of Haycock Road to add bike facilities that would tie in, um, across the intersection and then all the way to Mustang Alley. And then if the county wishes to proceed, uh, further up Haycock Road. So it's a very positive development. We have a lot of details we need to work out about that, but I wanted to report that that effort is underway and, and I'm, I'm feeling, uh, very optimistic that that will be successful. And that'd be, uh, uh, I think a major step forward in terms of safely getting our students to and from, students and teachers safely to and from the high school and Mary Ellen Henderson by bicycle. So that's, uh, my report for tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, before we get to Phil, um, I just wanted to make note of the fact that Mr. Snyder is now a new grandfather, first time. So congratulations to, uh, Dave. So I think mother and son, right, grandson are doing fine. So congratulations to you. Uh, Mr. Duncan?
Great news about Dave Snyder, congratulations. Great news about the bike trail, that's terrific, uh, the bike project. Back to the first couple of things you mentioned, Wyatt. Um, does the Census Bureau or somebody related to them, uh, every July 1st update population numbers? And do we have said updated numbers anywhere floating around that we're able to make public?
So there are a couple of sources. The Census Bureau does do an annual update, and that is generally mo-, based on modeling that they do. Um, it is, um, not necessarily driven by facts on the ground, like new buildings that have, have, um, gotten certificates of occupancy and things like that. Uh, the Weldon Cooper Center also does population, um, uh, estimates for every jurisdiction, every county and city in the Commonwealth. They also use a model as opposed to knowing, you know, that a, an apartment building got open or a new condo building got open. So with this study, we like to take that, uh, those models, which use birth rate data and things like that, but then also build in local knowledge of new housing units that we know have come online and then build that into our own estimates. Um, the schools similarly, uh, want to take the Weldon Cooper's baseline numbers that every jurisdiction uses, but then inform that with actual facts on the ground in the City of Falls Church. So we're both after the same thing and, and, um, uh, schools and general government. And, and we're looking forward to work with the Stephen Fuller Institute to help us with that.
So those numbers would be available later, later in the fall? Is that basically the timeframe?
We will, um, you know, we're viewing the school's need for data as, as sort of the first priority because they'll be doing-
Yeah.
-their capital planning this fall. So we're hopeful to have school, uh, projections first, and that would be in the fall timeframe.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Shields?
Mr. Mayor, we do generally have the council requests at this point.
Okay. Are there any council-
Just to remind you.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
Uh, thanks Wyatt on the updates. Um, when should we expect the demographic study and the bike master plan to be done? What is the engagement period for both of those?
So the engagement, well, so the demographic study, uh, we are working with the Stephen Fuller, uh, folks on that schedule right now. So I'll follow up with you on that schedule of work. The bike master plan, I think the public engagement process will be in the, in the September and October timeframe. And, um, and we will have a work session with the City Council. I think we're scheduling that for your, uh, for your first work session when you come back after Labor Day for a briefing for the City Council on the scope of work for that bike master plan and sort of, um, you know, before we charge off and engage with the community on it, have a touch base with the City Council. Um, so we'll have a, a deeper discussion of that schedule at that time.
Got it. I think for both of these items, as we think about a future council being seated and a new work plan, I think having the outputs from both of those would be good for that as well as budget season.
Mr. Snyder?
Thanks much. Um, so, um, both to the city attorney and the city manager, I understand that we are working on a proposal, looking at the possibility of requiring cars to stop at points where the, the trail crosses the highways. And I wondered if you could just confirm that, that that's a subject of great interest to a number of people in the community if we're looking at that.
So we, um, are in receipt of a memo, I think we've, in receipt of a draft memo, I think we're going to soon get the final memo from the CACT requesting, uh, that we, um, petition the Park Authority for four-way stops at, at crossings of the WNOD. Uh, we will, uh, we've engaged with the Park Authority on this question in the past, uh, and we will do so again. Um, have a, a legal review of the rights we have in terms of our right-of-way vis-a-vis the WNOD right-of-way. Um, but we also want to engage with the Park Authority just on, um, they have traditionally had a view of wanting to be consistent throughout the, the 44-mile length of the trail in terms of how traffic is treated. Um, and we're told that they may have, uh, that their thinking on this may have shifted in, in the recent years. And so we'll touch base with them on, on their, their views on it and then report that back to the City Council.
Thank you.
And, and the CACT.
Other comments, requests? All right. Yes, Ms. Hardy?
Um, it's Mayor. Um, so first of all, thank you to the staff and the public for joining us on the T-zone's walking tour. I know it was really, really hot out there, so appreciate the prep work that went into it. Um, I wanted to propose that when we get through all the business on the agenda on item 11, to be able to do a debrief from the walking tour and next steps ahead of our next August meeting, if the council's amenable to that.
Second?
Um, I, I think that it's somewhat, we haven't alerted the public if this is going to be a substantive discussion of the ordinance. So I'm trying to figure out what is it that you're proposing. Cause we haven't, it's not on the agenda for action. And it's, as we know from the, the crowd tonight, it's a major issue of citizen interest.
I just think that since we have an opportunity with all of us here to be able to talk about debrief and next steps, um, and be able, the direct staff is needed if they need to make any updates before the August meeting.
Okay, well, it seems to me undemocratic, but if the votes are there to go, go for it then.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Duncan?
So I'm not there, is there, is there a crowd of folks in the room that are interested in this topic, as far as we can tell?
No, but I'm not sure they knew that this topic was going to be coming up. I think that's Mr. Snyder's point.
I see. Well, if it's focused on process and directions to staff, I'd be okay to have a conversation. I think it would be good for first reading to be as, uh, you know, as much information out there before first reading as possible so that folks could plan to come to the council meeting on August the 7th to, um, speak to this if they're interested in it.
Yeah, I have just a couple of things I'd like staff to clarify from questions I heard on the tour today too about, um, and I think it'd be helpful to have those publicly stated questions, um, so that they can be considered by staff between now and the 7th of August.
All right. Well, that's coming up here, so why don't we get through our agenda? We can clarify what we're going to talk about when we, we get there. Why don't we move on now to our business on the agenda? Madam Clerk?
Yes, our first item is TR 23-Dash-21, Resolution to Adopt the Government Operations Energy Action Plan for the City of Falls Church.
And, uh, Mayor Charter, members of council, uh, Mr. Andy Young will, um, give a brief presentation to the City Council on the, uh, on the, right now, the draft energy action plan. The staff recommendation is to approve this plan at tonight's meeting. Um, council discussed it for the last time at the work session last week. We'd like to just give a presentation that will be brief, about three to five minutes, really for the community's awareness of what's in the plan and some of the key points that are, that are made in the plan and, and key action steps that are called for in the plan. Um, as we would always say with a plan, the plan will be implemented through votes of the City Council and appropriations by the City Council at future dates. But the plan lays out a coherent strategy for accomplishing ambitious goals in the area of, um, energy efficiency and carbon emission reduction. Mr. Young, thank you for your work on this plan.
Thank you Wyatt. Thank you Mayor, council members, for the opportunity to come, uh, present tonight for, and for your feedback at last week's work session. With the, here. With the proposed plan under consideration, um, this evening we have the opportunity to achieve, there we go, so, uh, up to an 83% reduction in emissions by the year 2030. So, um, kind of from the highlights, the, uh, big components come from the implementation of the Virginia Clean Energy Act, or Virginia Clean Economy Act, pardon me, which is Dominion's changes to the grid that we all use electricity from, as well as the purchase of off-site renewable energy credits and eventually a power purchase agreement on behalf of the city. In addition to that, we've got smaller components and, and efficiencies we'll able, be able to gain over the years related to facilities, fleet improvements, and onsite solar. To help achieve these reductions, we're proposing an, an eight-step strategy. So the first three of these are how we're organized and communicate. So, um, first collaboration partnerships and plan management. This is how we all work together, both within the city and with our partners in the region. Employee education and training, so how we train our staff on how to take care of our facilities and fleet, as well as our, uh, tenants on how to occupy our buildings and, and use our vehicles. And finally, the third one is metrics training and metrics tracking and reporting. So managing what we measure. So, uh, number four, the primary driver will be a shift to clean electricity. So rooftop solar on our buildings where it makes sense. And then off-site clean energy through renewable energy credits initially. energy credits initially, and then transitioning in the medium term to a power purchase agreement with, in partnership with other jurisdictions in Virginia. The next two are related to our buildings and energy use. So first of all, energy efficiency, you know, this is how we, you know, fine-tune the operating parameters of our, the buildings that we operate, and leveraging control systems to make them more efficient. And then electrification, so transitioning to heat pumps, electric hot water heaters and cooking equipment, as our older equipment ages out. And then finally, on our fleet, so optimization, so implementing a motor pool, making the best use of the vehicles we have, and then, and then finally, a sustainable fleet procurement, so transitioning to hybrids and electric vehicles, where mission and cost considerations make sense. So, like any plan for the city, this one's intended to be directional on where we want to go, I think is why it said resource needs and expenditures will be considered separately, as part of council's regular budgeting and governance processes. There's a lot to do here. There's an expectation for data analysis and some detailed plans, you know, executing this will be a challenge. But we've initiated internal discussions on how to do this, and the good news is we're able to get started, and we've got some good things in the works already. So, we're going to procure the energy software platform this year, in the first half of FY24. The Public Works Department announced today they're starting their motor pool August 1st. And consolidated fleet planning is already underway, with cross-departmental input happening later this month. There will be investments needed. Some of those are things we need to invest in anyway, vehicles that need to be replaced, building equipment that's aged out. So we'll be looking to time those investments at the proper time when that equipment needs replaced. Greenhouse gas production is only one part of the consideration in making decisions. Cost to the taxpayers is really important, particularly the upfront cost, but also the total cost of ownership, as utility savings over time, federal incentives that we can get for the city, as well as mission needs, and kind of employee comfort and usability of our stuff. So, provided we move on from the government plan this evening, the next step will be to work on our community energy action plan. So we've already done some initial public engagement. We had a town hall in April, and we have been meeting with various boards and commissions starting in May and June, and continuing here in July. So, we have a second town hall coming up next Tuesday. Everybody mark your calendars, it's going to be virtual, and we've been doing some extensive public outreach to try and get the word out. The plan is to take the draft, to complete the draft plan in August, and then take it for review to the, both the ESC and the Planning Commission in the September timeframe, and then the council for work session and then action in October. Still finalizing those dates to make sure everybody's got the proper review times, and we get everybody's comments and input. So I'm happy to take any questions, or dive deeper into any component of the report, if you all have any questions on.
All right, well, thank you very much, and I know we've got a few folks here, I don't know if you all want to speak at all, is it a travel man, or either one of you want to, sure.
Tim Stevens, 106 Gresham Place. Just a few quick words, it was good working with Kate Walker to implement our overall plan, the 80% reduction goal. It's nice to pivot now from goals to actual implementation. So I had a chance to read through the plan in detail today, and it's a good plan. I've read through a number of these, and this one stands out very well. So I would encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the hard work that went into this, Mr. Young and others. Great job. So, questions, comments? I know we talked about this last week, and so I don't know if there's a whole lot coming from up here. Ms. Conley?
No, Debbie has comments.
I know, so it's something, both of them have comments. Oh, you're just tapping the, okay, Ms. Hiscott?
Apologies for the confusion. My comments are brief, and just another round of thanks to Andy and to all those who have engaged in this process, and that, on the community engagement on the town hall at Mariney and High School. I know many people up here were there as well, and it was super interesting, and hopefully a lot of people will come out next week to give additional input on how you'd like to see that plan going. But I know that Andy just briefly talked about, you know, that we're implementing the motor pool. That might seem like a small change, but it actually took quite a bit of effort and work, collaboration among staff to talk about who has what, who can use what. I mean, it was a, it was a much bigger win and a much bigger collaboration than it might sound, just from the brief note that Andy had made in this comment. So I just want to thank you for doing that, digging in, Andy, and for all the staff who've really put the city and the environment and citizens first, in talking and agreeing to do a lot of these motor pools. That's a big step, so thank you. That's what I would like to add.
All right. Ms. Hardy?
Just two quick things. One, I reread through the plan, so thank you for incorporating the comment around kind of potentially a carbon-neutral goal, something really audacious by 2030 or 2035, so it's good to see how we could potentially get there. And I think in light of the comments you heard from work session about how do we make sure that we are keeping in mind maximum emissions impact while being cost-effective, I was thinking of a traditional, kind of like a two-by-two matrix, right? Be able to map out all the different strategies on two dimensions, a cost, high-low, and then an impact, high-low. And ideally, we're doing things that are low-cost and high-impact, but we know that there are often going to be things that aren't going to be that, and so I think that's where the really tricky ones are. And to be able to look at all the strategies, you know, as we get further along in implementation, and think about that on a more simple kind of two-by-two scale, that I think the rest of us can grasp better. So, thank you, nice work.
Okay, Ms. Conley?
I also want to say thank you. This is such a well-done report, and as I look at your schedule of community engagement that started in April, you stayed on schedule, which oftentimes we aren't able to do, so that is amazing. Thank you. And what you don't have mentioned up there is the engagement that you had with the school division. I feel like that's my role to mention all the time, so I will do that, to say that this is a real model for how the general government and schools can work together on these kind of plans, because we are affecting all the people, wherever they may be in government. So thank you for working so well with the schools, including them in all the pieces, and having that in there, so thanks.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
While we have, I think, other people in the audience, I was reflecting on the FC Can Community Open House that you all held on Saturday, and I thought that was actually a really nice informal opportunity to engage the community on what people can do. And so while we're doing kind of town halls and looking at the community plan in more formal meetings, I would encourage us to think about, again, reflecting back on how we did the East End area plan, where we went to the people, right? Nothing, not everything has to be big formal meetings, and I think smaller, more accessible going to the people is often a really good way to get input. So, encourage us to keep learning from how we did community engagement with the last small area plan effort, like the community open house that FC Can held this weekend.
All right, thank you. So, anything else on this? If not, do we have a motion?
Move to adopt TR 23-21.
Second?
Ms. Leon, and the second. Madam Clerk? Let me just see if there's any public comment, any members of the public wish to speak to this matter, seeing none of the matters close to the public. Ms. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
All right, thank you all very much. Let's move on, next items are consent items. Anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda here? If not, do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Snyder on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's keep going. So now we are done, this is a short, at least so far, short meeting. Let's go on to business, now to the agenda. Any standing regional committees, liaison reports? Yes, Ms. Conley?
In my role with the Virginia Missive League, I'm the Chair of the Human Development Education Committee, and we had our summer meeting last week, and one of the topics that came up, I think, is really interesting for our budget. The, how, the House and Senate had advised J-LARC to study the SOQ, the Funding Formula for Schools. They looked at the LCI, which is one of those things that is super frustrating. Mr. Snyder has told us about LCI for years. They also looked at the Standards of Quality, and wanted to find out if school funding was appropriate from the state to our local divisions. And this study, Ms. Mester knows, right? The study showed that the state is not supporting our public schools in the manner that they should be. They did find that the LCI is actually better than we think it is, but that the Standards of Quality, which fund the support staff and teachers in the classroom and give a minimum number, are far below what should be funded. So, the recommendations from the Virginia School Board Association, from the Virginia Association of Superintendents, and from VML, for this upcoming legislative session will be to, for the, for the budget to pass with much more funding to public schools. So I think that, if that does come to pass, that will be helpful with our own budget considerations. It was a very good report, and VML provided a nice description from the J-LARC person describing the whole thing, so I'm happy, I will share that with all of you, so that you can see that. But I think that bodes well, if indeed the directions are followed.
All right, thank you. Ms. Siscott?
Yes, I just, I have a question really for Cindy. I haven't had a chance to speak with you. On the High Growth Coalition meeting last week, I wasn't able to, I had a work conflict, I wasn't able to attend. I don't know who else was able to, but if you have any kind of top-line feedback from us on that meeting, that would be great.
Sure. The High Growth Coalition did hold their annual meeting last Friday, and we were down in Culpeper. Brendan Woodley and myself attended this year. The first part was on affordable housing, and looking at some of the bills that didn't come out of General Assembly, looking at demographics data, and how to maintain local control on zoning while facilitating affordable housing. As you all recall, some of the bills last year were more on, localities are causing the problem, so therefore we need to eliminate local zoning control. So that was the first part of the discussion. Then we had a little bit on transportation. The largest piece was on anticipated changes in the General Assembly based on retirement and the upcoming elections. Very similar to what we've heard at VML, they just did a deeper dive, and so I have those hard copies, and I'll be PDFing them and sharing them. So I think it was a good foundation. We ended up listing some of the things that would be the High Growth Coalition's priorities for next year, and I'm waiting to see that in writing, very similar to what we worked through last year.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for attending on behalf of the city.
All right, so let's move on now to council member comments, and I know we heard a little bit about T-Zones just a minute ago, and I think we'll hear a little bit more in just a moment. I would just suggest, because this isn't advertised as a council discussion, that we keep our T-zone comments really in the form of requests for staff for either information or something along those lines, and the comments we have, we save towards a public hearing that's properly advertised as such, so that those who are interested in participating, either making public comment or observing, will be better informed as to the topic of conversation. So do people have requests of staff wanting additional information, and other like? Ms. Conley?
I do, and I really would like to thank Paul Stoddard and Jack Trainer for that tour. They did a really good job with a lot of people. I was a little worried that everyone was standing in the street, I was, kept trying to push everyone to the sidewalks, but they did such a nice job, answered a lot of questions, a wide variety of questions, and so kudos to both of them. I want to thank the community members who came as well, because they asked some great questions. Everybody knows a little different bit about the T-Zones, and we all keep learning. So, these are my questions, and I'm just wondering if we can do this, and our Jack and Paul aren't even here to hear these questions, so I'm going to direct them to you, Wyatt. The first one is, as we look at the SUP, is there a way to put the step back on, I talked about this last week, the, the step back on the side where there is a residential building in a commercial zone, can we add 10 feet to that step back? So that the step back is 10 feet facing residential, and also facing commercial that has residential units in it?
And the by right and the SUP, or just the SUP?
And by right, yeah. And SUP.
And just to clarify the question, that would be to basically have the same standard for abutting a residential zone apply to a property that's gone through the SE process? Is that, so that the, so that the step, so the step back is the same?
So the step back is the same, because the ones that have gone through the SE process have residential units facing the transition zone. So it gives a little more light and air to the people that live there, and we're thinking about the people that live up in there, not the commercial use on the first floor.
Thank you, I understand the question.
Yeah, 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 okay. I just want to make sure anybody else who's watching this understands that question. My next question is about the height. So we, we're at 40 feet in a, by right, up to 50 feet in an SUP. Can we move it? What, if we pull in 10 feet from the residential area, can we move that to 45 feet by right? With a, with a pull, a step back, front and back? Again, these are just questions that I would have asked last week, but having seen it all, it makes a big difference. Let's see. And then we heard last week that with affordability, to do a two-over-two, or a two-by-two, it needs to be 45 feet, and that helps us with the affordable housing piece as well, to keep those units small. All right, my fourth question is just, it came up at the event, the sidewalks, and I feel like we just need to reiterate that re-looking at the sidewalk plan is something that is on the work plan for council, to consider those brick sidewalks and reconsider them, and if they are the appropriate thing to have in Falls Church. So I want people to know, who raised that question, that that is a concern. And then what would happen if we, on the SUP, with the setback from the street, could we say that there really is, everything has to be 20 feet, instead of putting in the option to be 15 feet and 45 feet tall? That was one of the questions that one of the gentlemen asked. So, those are my four main questions. I think staff has done a really good job of figuring all those out, but, so, anyway, I don't know if others share that concern, but I think that that may help people who are especially concerned at the Broadway, give a little more light and air to the properties behind there.
All right, other questions directed at staff? Ms. Siscott?
Thanks. A couple of questions that came up when walking tonight. I, Paul mentioned that we have the, that we have the opportunity to have prohibitions and the setback on, I'm going to get the right word here, that he used.
Projections?
Restrictions on any projections in the setbacks, that we had an opportunity to ensure that there were restrictions on any projections in the setbacks, and I think that's definitely important, as we saw and heard people talking about stoops and ramps and other things that were sticking out into that setback. Because having a 20-foot setback, you know, obviously, was larger than a lot of the places we were walking today, but if you, if things projected into it, it doesn't really make a difference. So I want to ensure that we add any restrictions on projections in the setbacks. And, sorry, Mayor Beth set a couple of mine as well. I also want to get clarifications on the roof, so that everybody understands what that looks like, so there's no debate or ambiguity about what could be higher on the roof line, you know, if we set at 40 or 45 feet, what does that mean? Because I heard 10 feet, I heard 20 feet, but not 20 feet in this zone, so I want to make sure everybody understands what, that we all understand what that could possibly be. And then, I also wanted, I don't have the staff report in front of me, but the drawing, I believe it's like line 45 on last week's staff report, the drawing of the by right developable, developable area, is it line 45? That's also in the walking tour tonight. It's the one that, you know, that has the two current buildings overlaid with this gray, you know, structure, and it says that's what's available by right, but that doesn't include, like that doesn't demonstrate what a tree can be, could be, it doesn't demonstrate the 40% impermeable, it doesn't demonstrate, you know, where parking would be. So I think it's, I think it's a little bit of an intimidating and unattractive vision that isn't what actually could be built by right even, like that's not what it could possibly look like. So, I'm wondering if there's, I don't know how much work it is to, there are a lot of different options, a lot of configurations, but I think that this is an overly scary drawing, because that's actually not what could be built by right, the way that we have things written right now, so. So, perhaps that's something we could clarify for the public, so it's not so onerous. And then talked to several, you know, people in the Broadway who shared with me about the residential, even though it's a mixed-use building, the residential facing the T-zones, and that, and so we talked about that concept of a step back if you had a little bit more space on that side. It's, you know, still a building, but it would allow a bigger corridor there. And I think those are my questions. Yes, thank you. Thanks for those.
All right. Others? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. So, based on the comments that I heard from the neighbors on the street, I agree with what Debbie was asking about, is, you know, can we restrict projections like stoops and ramps? Because ultimately, what we want is, we want a wider sidewalk width. And so whether we achieve that by restricting projections or minimum sidewalk width within the 20 feet, I'm open to staff comment on how to achieve that, because I think by experiencing kind of what we walked down there, I think ultimately, we want something wider than the four feet behind the spectrum. Like, when it gets to be six feet, it feels much more open. So, I think you could accomplish it by multiple ways. So, I would support that. We also mentioned it last week, but I think the way that Mary Beth mentioned it tonight, I would also support a 45-foot height by right with a 10-foot step back if it faces residential. And I think that would allow for the three-story townhouses with the roof deck and penthouse, and then the stacked townhome idea, which I think would achieve lower price point and smaller units that we started talking about last week. So, I would love staff to help us explore that before first reading. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. Leon?
Yes, thank you, everybody. My comments on this are really two points. I do think, even though there was an attempt to answer the question by Paul as to where, where is the starting point on the building to start the measurement at 20 feet on the step back if the building isn't a behemoth block, right? So, you've got, you know, I think there's some clarity there for staff to provide some answers on, because sometimes there's like a little bump out of two feet. It's not necessarily a projection that's a stoop, you know, but it's part of the building footprint. So, I got a couple of questions on, there wasn't enough clarity on, where is the measurement on the building, start with 20 feet? So, it's a little bit technical, but I think it's, it's one that's just good to clarify. Agree on the comments so far. I heard three folks discuss or bring up restricting projections to create more open pedestrian pathways. I definitely heard that in the comments tonight. And, you know, lastly, of the comments that I heard, you know, I just, I do not, the one shared goal in all of this that folks, I'm hearing, right, is there is support, there's no issues, and there's no support with the concept of diversifying the housing stock. So, I express my, you know, my support at last working session verbally around supporting the ability to have two-by-two units and thereby raising the height to 45 feet with a 10-foot setback. So, asking again, a step, sorry, step back. I make that mistake too.
Everyone does.
The height, at the top. Yes, support that. So, I'm asking again, as a comment, that we take a look at that. Please.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's important for the staff report that comes to us before the August 7th meeting to be as complete as possible, so that folks can get their hands on it before that meeting, and there's no, you know, appearance that we're trying to legislate from the dais, you know, at that meeting. So, in pursuant to that objective, I would like to ask two things. One, I think a better understanding of the by right site plan process needs to be part of our information sharing. I personally, you know, see it as my job on Council to try to dive into the details of various projects and so forth, but there's nothing that is the equivalent of the effort that the Planning Commission, the AAP, and other commissions expend, to really look at the very detailed elements of these plans. And I think there's a misconception that if something's by right, it's just, you know, the developer gets to decide everything, and there's no expression of concerns from the community, no opportunity for people to speak to those concerns. I don't believe that's the case, and I think that's been shown in some of the buildings, particularly Broad and Washington. I recall the site plan review process seemed to take almost as much time as the SE review process had taken before, which is probably appropriate, because people had concerns. So, I would just like the staff report to reflect, you know, exactly what would happen with a by right proposal, what hoops it would have to jump through, what bodies are involved, and make sure that people understand that. Second thing, I think I mentioned this last week, I'm not positive, but some questions are like, what do we, why are we building townhouses? I would answer that with the, just go up to Tyson Ridge, and you can see that the market wants to build that product. And I would just assume, see folks living in the city of Falls Church in those sorts of situations, rather than see them jumping across the border. So, some understanding of the regional marketing, market realities, and maybe a look at what those products look like, so that they don't seem so strange, you know? A three-level townhouse with a rooftop deck is fairly common, I think, in the district these days, but maybe not so much in Virginia, although I think it's becoming more so. And I'd like Paul Sturz to get in on that. So, those are the two asks, just sort of comparables, I suppose, from the surrounding area, the sort of housing product that we're really focusing on here, two-over-twos as well. Yeah, I would, in conclusion, I would support 45, 10 numbers that have been talked about by the others, because I think that speaks to market realities and is still, as we saw tonight on the walking tour, a sufficient step back that pedestrian experience, you know, on the ground is, makes those upper stories and certainly the setback rooftop deck really completely invisible to the pedestrians. So, I think we can meet market realities and also be faithful to our desires to have a walkable and pleasant city. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Snyder?
So, in the name of transparency, we're going to discuss the most divisive issue this community has seen for the last 10 years without telling people we're going to be discussing it. I have serious objections to this whole discussion, and I'll place those objections on the record. I would also note that the summary of the questions was inaccurate and incomplete at best. And further, since I've already discussed this in public session, I plan to ask city staff to draft amendments that will reflect where I think the community really is. Thank you.
All right. So, I've got a few comments or questions or however you want to do. So, I would support also this notion of evaluation of projections into the setbacks and how that interplays. I'd also like to know what the setbacks are for penthouses in this zoning district. In other words, how far from the edge of the building does a penthouse? Do you know the answer to that?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to respond to questions. I do know the answer to it. It's the, whatever the height of the penthouse is, is how far it has to be stepped back from the roof edge.
Okay. So, 10-foot height would be 10-foot required. Could that be modified through this process?
Yes. So, the Council could amend that and make it twice, you know, it has to be stepped back two times.
Well, it could be short, but it could be less than that as well.
That's right.
Okay. So, let me ask you, the sidewalk width, we talked a little bit about that. I guess I'd like to know, what is the width? Where, we have a standard for that. It's not really subject to what we necessarily want it to be on a, on this block or that. We have standards for that street, correct? Well, if we're not really responding, I'll just say, I'd like to know what the standards are for Park Avenue, and I presume that our standards are what any development along this way would provide, nothing more, nothing less. So, if it's six feet, then this is going to get a six-foot sidewalk unless we prescribe something different, which I haven't heard to date. So, I know, I think ADA is five feet, and I don't know if our standard is six. I don't recall, but I'm, anyway, I would like to know that at our next meeting.
Can I just pause you just truly, because I'm, when you, when we're saying 20, the 20-foot front setback, you're saying that would be overridden by something else?
No, I'm talking about the penthouse height.
Oh, okay.
So, a penthouse would be like an elevator return.
Sorry to interrupt. I just was making sure.
Yeah, it's fine. Like an elevator return or a staircase to go up, you know, how close can that be to the edge of the top of the building?
Got it.
And the answer is as tall as it is, is as far as it should be, although it could be modified. So, it could be closer, depending on whether folks are agreeable.
I heard sidewalk, not setback. Sorry.
Yeah, so I was talking about sidewalks as well. People were asking, hey, what's our sidewalk width? And I think we have a standard for that street, and that's what we're going to get provided unless we provide some additional guidance or requirements. But otherwise, it won't generally be a case-by-case negotiation. It will be the standard on Park Avenue, six feet, and that's what you're going to get, or five feet. So, I think that's what the answer will be, but I'd like to know at our next meeting, what is the standard along Park in particular, and are there recommendations to change that? I'd also like to know if there are any additional measures proposed for historic preservation? The four houses that are historic in this T-zone, what is staff proposing to help us save those houses? So that when the value triples, because you can put a lot more density on there, what's going to happen to those houses? How can we help preserve our history? Also, I just wanted some clarification. One of the earlier comments is talking about 45 feet and allowing affordable, and I don't know if that was meant to be just generically affordable or affordable in the sense of required. I guess I would ask the city attorney if you can elaborate on what is allowed, what is, what could the county, the city achieve by law at 45 feet if that was, in fact, the requirement by right? Is there any provision for any affordable housing in a 45-foot project? And whether staff believes that the difference between 45 feet and 50 feet would be enough to incentivize anyone to want to provide affordable housing, because the difference in height is minimal, it's not even a full story? So, I guess I'd like staff's opinion on whether going to 45 feet by right would, in fact, affect people's desire to seek an SUP and our ability legally to require or obtain affordable housing, committed affordable housing, because that number is so close to what's permitted by right, and whether, in fact, anyone would go down that route with the additional cost for a limited return. Let's see what else we got here. Also, with respect to parking, what is it? How can we, in terms of the form, the urban form, ensure the parking is screened properly? What is it, the recommendations of staff for ensuring that we don't have a bunch of houses built on stilts with stairwells kind of going down? I don't think this kind of project's going to incentivize or allow or make it so that people want to do underground parking. How is it we're going to treat parking, potentially with this very high coverage, in a way that preserves an urban form and walkability and attractive walks? I'd like to know that as well. So, anyway, that's my request of staff. I don't know if there's any additional ones, but if not, yes, Ms. Connolly?
I just, I, in response to Mr. Snyder's comment that this isn't transparent, I just, in my mind, this is super transparent, because these are all the questions that arose out of our recent walk. So, I think there's no effort here to do anything that the public can't see. We all just had conversations. We were all late for the meeting, because we were having so many conversations with people and trying to be responsive to the needs of the community. So, in my mind, I really would just like to have these answers, because this is what the people asked me while I was walking, and I had asked it the last week. So, I hope that there really isn't an understanding that there's any attempt to circumvent the process. This is really the response to that listening session, in my mind.
Ms. Hardy?
And for people, I think, listening and who joined us, hopefully, you know, based on the questions and direction, I think you're hearing from us up here, that we hear from you in the next two weeks before first reading, because we do want this to be a very open and transparent process.
All right. Thank you. So, are there any additional comments on T-zones? I think we've got that covered then. How about, let's go on to minutes. Mr. Duncan, have you had a chance to review the minutes?
The only thing I've been able to find on the minutes presented for our reviews in line 378, where there's an apostrophe S after my name. It sounds sort of self-centered, but that's the only, there's a great rendering of the whole Eden Center, East End, the small-area-plan discussion, and it's a very dense packet of minutes, but everything looks good. So, I would, unless somebody else has got something else, I would approve of the minutes of the meeting of June 26, 2023, with the correction, typographical correction on line 378.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Is there anything else anyone wants to mention before we adjourn? A new world record, 8:36. What are we going to do with our nights? All right. Again, congratulations to Mr. Snyder.